I don't know.
I'm not sure if my planner would.
Call me.
The motion to approve the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda in a second.
I'll second that.
It's moved second for discussion. Mary Nonos, please say hi. Rich.
Morning.
Morning.
Um. That must be important, moving and stuff. And ready, well, we're incredibly spot rotten yet. Where it's drawing, what's not. The biggest thing is trying to get this. I think we got item C and item B can kind of be combined resolution. That we have is for the approval of the paving project and authorization for me to sign about. So I think I maybe mentioned it last week, the bids came in, we got one bid through the DOT Department of Asphalt. Eight hundred and seventy nine thousand two hundred and thirty seven dollars and seventy cents for a two inch melon fill in Wheelerwood North Casino. Engineers estimate eight hundred and seventy two thousand nine hundred and forty six seventy five, so free type bid there, it's pretty, pretty competitive in my opinion, budget nine hundred thousand. We're still in good shape, so my recommendation be to go ahead and get this project awarded so we can continue on with the process of getting that road constructed this summer.
He says only bid that was submitted to.
But it's within.
Yeah, yeah, I just, it's kind of shocking that there's not more people.
Right, and I think that, uh, yeah, there's a lot, I don't even know, I think. Got these coming in for some DOT stuff too, but I maybe it just wasn't a job that. I don't know if humans is familiar with that type of mix that we're using, we're using that high pro that we use East to graph them. Trying to get a little bit more structure with a thinner lift. So, I mean, it'll reflective crack through in a year, but we'll get that stuff sealed up following here. Keep on the maintenance.
So we have a resolution then. Resolution twenty twenty two oh five oh two oh one. Whereas a board of supervisors is worth counting out here, here after referred to as the board believes the Wheelerwood Avenue paving project fifty. F F FM CO ninety eight eighty two fifty five ninety eight. Here have to refer to as a project is in the best interest of Worth County Iowa and the residents there of the project. Is defined as an H M A resurfacing with milling and whereas board of supervisors saw the appropriate professional guidance for the concept planning of the project. All the steps required by the code of Iowa for notification hearing and bid letting and whereas the board finds this resolution appropriate and necessary to protect, preserve and improve the rights, privileges, property, peace, safety, health, welfare, comfort and convenience of Worth County and its citizens. All as provided for and permitted by section three three one point three oh one of the code of Iowa. Is therefore resolved by the board to accept the bid from Hartland Asphalt in the amount of eight hundred and seventy nine thousand two hundred and thirty seven dollars and seventy cents and awards associated contract to the same. It be it further resolved all the resolutions or parts of resolution in conflict with this resolution are hereby repealed. If any part of this resolution is judged invalid or unconstitutional sus such jurisdiction shall not affect the ballot validity of the resolution or actions of the board as a whole or part therefore and not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, the resolution shall be in full force and effect from from and after the date of its approval as provided by law. Be it further resolved by the Worth County Board of Supervisors that after receiving the necessary contract documents including but not limited to the contractor's bond and cert of certificate of insurance, Richard Brown, the county engineer for Worth County Iowa be and is hereby designated authorized and empowered on the behalf of the board of supervisors of said county to exercise contracts in connection with and air for award construction project left let through the DOT for this county adopted the second day of May twenty twenty two. So I will take a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's moved in second. Is in for a discussion. Now the roll call vote. Yes, well, we're.
I.
Stone. Maybe.
I.
Motion. Alright.
I'll go for you in secondary rows for now.
So Mike, I guess you're up.
I'm sure, uh, maybe we just let you know that our spray truck that we have the grant for is on hold, supply chain issues, of course, so. But it is, we've got truck, we've got the flatbed put on, we're just gonna up at the Allen D A, they're building the spray unit and they're waiting for one component to come in in June.
Okay.
So they knew a lot of the day we got the grant. Otherwise, you've probably seen the hydro seedings we did last year didn't fare too well, we had dry conditions in the spring, but been out there, cut rush stuff, so. Any questions for me? It's been a while since I've been here.
Oh, the only, I talked about Bobby Moens where you, you, I received it in one oh five there. Scour the bottom out a little bit, I don't know, you know, any of that hydro seed will take.
I don't know either, have you been, it's on one oh five, it's that one ditch thing we did out there and I just drove by it late last week to see it. That's a minor scour on the tail end of it.
Yeah.
Where, I don't know if the bank, the bank still showed.
Banks are good.
Yeah, the bottom, it might take some time to get.
Yeah.
It might be best suited to maybe shoot it again with something after maybe the banks catch up and we get some we maybe get out of the rain period a little bit to see if we can get later in the spring, maybe when it's.
Is this one that got hydro seed last fall?
Yeah.
Yeah. On the north side.
Yeah.
Side that. Five over by.
Too far from just east area.
Okay.
Yeah. You say it just left the channel right down through the bottom, it didn't cut it that.
Didn't cut it deep, but it did cut a channel in.
Yeah, so I would assume everything that was seated different.
It'll grow real thick right at the elbow.
Yes. So I don't know if that's something we want to address maybe later on or something, just to.
Yeah, we'll have it up and running.
Yeah. Yeah, because I think it's still all mobile and stuff for the guy, didn't do that bad, it's just.
Just get some. Nothing, nothing got established and then the malt side of the mulch didn't help it, just with the rain we had, it just, there was not.
Anyway, back to the rest of the.
So. Pretty simple, straightforward resolution.
Okay.
Year one.
Of reading resolutions. Resolution for the destruction of noxious weeds twenty twenty two crop year. It resolved by the board of supervisors, Worth County Iowa with a that pursuant to the provisions of chapter three seventeen of the code of Iowa as amended is hereby ordered. The owner and the that each owner and each person in the possession or control of any land in Worth County Iowa shall cut down, burn or otherwise destroy all noxious weeds thereon as defined in this chapter as at such time in each year and in such manner it as shall prevent said weeds from blooming or coming into maturity and should keep such lands free from such growth of any other weeds as shall render the streets or highways adjoining said lands unsafe for public travel, noxious weed shall be cut or otherwise destroyed. Primary noxious weeds which shall include quack grass, bull thistle, perennial south, it's a horse metal, Canadian thistle, leafy spurge, perennial pepper grass, European morning glory or field bindweed, Russian napweed, buckform and palmer amaranth. Secondary noxious weeds shall include butter print annual, wild carrot biannual and perennial sour duck perennial, multiple floor rose, testes Tesla biannual, cockbur annual, buckform perennial, smooth duck perennial and sunflower annual, shatter cane annual, wild mustard annual, sheep sorrel, poison him or puncture vine annual that all weeds in colony trump and local county roads and between fence lines therefore will be taken care of by the county. That if the owner or persons possessions or control of any lands in Worth County fail to comply with foregoing order, we commissioner so shall cause this to be done and that the expense of said work including cost of serving noticed and other cost of any to be assessed assessed against the real estate. That the county auditor be and is hereby directed to cause notice of the making and entering and the foregoing order of a publication in each of the official newspapers of the county by request of the county weed commissioner Mike Bodie at one thousand Central Avenue, Northwood Iowa. The weed commissioners be given full authority and power to carry out the provisions of the resolution published upon order by the of the Worth County Board of Supervisor Marks, maybe chair of the second day of May twenty twenty second. So I will take a motion to approve the noxious weed resolution.
Motion to approve noxious weed resolution.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any further discussion? Over.
I.
Stone.
Hey.
It's maybe I, the resolution will pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike. Keep up the good work.
Means I've never heard of.
I didn't mean go like.
Well, hope you don't have them.
I'll be hearing from Mike if I do. Okay. Was there any drainage? On the claims.
No drainage.
Oh, excuse me.
There's no claims but.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
DD, okay, the DD number thirty four, dear treat section thirty three, John. Just wash out. We all got the estimate from Peterson excavation.
And we had contacted two other contractors that hadn't responded, so.
Yep.
I think we just.
Well, John lots of fix, so.
Let's get, no, it needs to be fixed. It needs to be fixed correct and I think we waited long enough for getting any response back from anybody else.
Well, and it's under the threshold, so.
We got a contractor that's got time to do it now, jump on.
Rain, has it gotten worse or will that bid still hold?
I don't think it's changing. It can't, there's not much.
It's down to the, yeah, it's down to the hard.
Yeah, it's worked, so. Needs to get fixed.
Yeah, it looks like he's got everything, he's gonna haul, fill back in clay and everything and compact it and so you're happy with Mike doing it.
The only thing we were talking about, hey, maybe you and I did, or I know we talked about in the office was it kind of stinks the way that thing outlets into the stream, you know, you got that long stretch from the north end, all there are so many ways that service water gets into that ditch and it still wasn't enough.
Right.
So it must have been pretty darn hard to do, but um the problem I'm seeing, well, you've got that intake in a ditch that's now cut off because it's scoured out and blew out. Would it be beneficial to, I mean, leave the intake there? But even, and you don't usually bend the pipe and outlet it without having a structure there for the bin, but we were talking about just high tailing it, putting it in those, I looked at those intakes and they're all kinds of goofy. The one on the, the west end has I think the inlet coming in from the south is lower than the outlet that goes into the ditch. But then there's one coming to north and it must overflow and take more water when that intake fills up and pushes, continues it to the east. And then the east one comes in and it exits out to the ditch, but then there's a smaller one that takes it underneath the road, it's like an overflow, it's a.
Was it, is it built to specs or?
I don't know.
For the federal project at one time.
I think at one time it was, and that was put in before the relief line was there with, well, some of that hadn't been added to and the ditch was added because they wouldn't have had outlets before.
Yeah.
So I don't know what kind of a, I mean, it's and it's hard to say with all the water that we had, you know, how much actually fell, but.
Right, but if there's a, would be a way to improve it.
The way, the way that that is set up now because of.
I said, that's where I was probably gonna go, I mean.
That outlet pipe from the intake in the ditch comes in and then it kind of ends, it bends up against the current which probably either could be, needs to, we need to figure out a way to get that to maybe not when you got it against the current, it just kind of takes the water and that could have
slowed down.
Slowed down or maybe as fast as the current was, it could have just caused enough back pressure that it couldn't couldn't take it all at that time, you know, the ditch never got over the bank, it was the water on the outside of the bank that scoured out and took the bank with it. Which was really weird, you know, you had more water on the outside of the bank than you did on the inside, but it came that fast. But you go on the north end or not the north end, the west end and there's, I don't even know what size surface inlet there's there, it's a huge one.
Yeah.
There's a service inlet on the north end that puts the water in the ditch, then you got the intake right there that also takes surface water, puts it into the ditch and then you've got all the water that comes from that end that can't get into the intake fast enough to the next intake down by the road goes in and puts it in the ditch too, there were so many ways for that water to get in and it still wasn't enough. Now, we aren't, can't design for that type of an event, but holy cow.
Right.
And we're talking, I don't know, that's a thirty six inch main and the outlets are at least twenty four inches come out of the pipe.
Well.
So then is this just a Band-Aid and it should be revamped instead?
Back to its original design, other than.
You've got a better way of doing it.
Well, I, I just, I don't like I don't like the way that the intake of the road comes across and outlets into that ditch.
Don't change it.
Well, it, something needs to be different there because when the box cover got put in and the aprons were there, they had to realign and they couldn't cut into the wall of the box cover to get that big pipe in there, it was messed up, that structure. So they put a bend in it and what probably needed to happen was it probably needs to go back further and bend or geez, I don't know. Move the son of a gun, I don't know the one in the ditch.
Move the big intake.
In the ditch, I don't know how that, I don't.
Is there a place to move it to?
Well, it's in the ditch right now, it's not on private property. So any kind of adjustment would have to be shifted.
Property then instead of the county property.
Well, come on, or find a better way to get the pipe from the intake into the waterway, I mean, still have to bend it underground to get, I just don't like the way that it, it, it comes out of that intake toward the ditch, but it's got a bend and the water comes this way and it's just like.
You can't push.
The pressure, the pressure of the, the stream itself might be greater than what's the pipe is pushing out with head pressure because of the flow itself, it's hard to say what those numbers are, you've got but I think, so then it was, okay, well, what if we just where the break is, put a bend in it and just outletted that pipe directly into the ditch and left that one intake the way it is. And all it would do is take whatever service water can get to it and outlet it, and then if there's any water, the way that outlet is now whatever backs up is just a stream backup until the water comes back down, it's not gonna, you know what I mean?
So the surface drain or the surface, there's a surface out there along with an intake. Would there be? Is that what you're saying?
Well, what I'm saying is you just add another, well, we even talked about, do you add another surface? Another surface pipe through the bank. If, if we leave everything the way it is, add another surface culvert to dump into the bank there.
What if you open it up and did riff ramp?
Well, the only problem with that.
And I don't know what it looks like.
Only problem if you open it up, if you open up the bank.
Yep.
Now you're any, when the water gets higher, you're gonna back it up into the field.
Have backup, okay.
So um.
Put another pipe in, I mean.
Well, the thing I was just saying, the thing we were thinking of was at the break and it wouldn't be the most prudent thing to do unless we wanted to add a round culvert type section and create a manhole intake type thing and bend it in or just know where the bend is, bury it and then put it into the ditch so that the water doesn't get to the other intake now. That intake that's there must be taken, if there's some tile that might still be coming in that thirty six inch because it's still running. But there's no water getting into that thirty six inches full of silk. So there must be from the ditch intake to the west, there must be some field tile tied into that that you want to keep.
Right.
And that service intake will still take surface water. But that intake would now not be taking the thirty six inch water into that intake and then out it would directly dump back into the and maybe it takes a little bit more sketching out on a piece of paper to explain it a little bit, but you're fully aware of what it's doing out there.
Wow.
And uh.
That can be done within the right of it?
Well, what I'm saying is can we leave the intake alone, cap that thirty six inch on the west side and just directly dump that sucker right into the ditch and for that intake will still take surface water and it'll still have that bend in it, but now we're not fighting against, there's thirty six inch water coming from the west, we're just fighting service water that's gonna come in, so it'll be like a a backup relief until it comes back down again.
So it's a thirty six inch county main.
It is, the thirty six inch.
So we go in and start changing something, do we have to look at the engineering side of it or?
We're not changing.
Okay.
We're not changing, we're, we're changing how it.
Just word.
Yeah, we're not changing sizes, we're just relieving the water.
An outlet, basically.
Yeah.
I just don't want somebody coming back from upstream yelling us, you guys change.
Upstream, I think, probably.
Maybe help it.
Could actually help.
You know, and I'm just saying.
Downstream is the same, it's the same size pipe dumping into the.
Yeah, it's only one hundred feet down. Yeah. Where it dumps into it.
Yeah, the same amount of water dumps in, the thing is, is that, that existing intake in the ditch takes the thirty six inch water and it dumps it, I don't remember what size comes into the, into the ditch, but there is a little relief. I don't know if it's even twenty four inch, runs under the road and then it dumps into the ditch on the other side of.
High flow, low flow.
Yeah, it's a, like, it's another relief, but that can still operate because you're still taking surface water and it if the intake can't take all the water that's come into it now its first option is to go into the ditch, second option is to overflow and go on the downstream side. It'll still function that way, it's just that you're not gonna dump all thirty six inch volume into that intake anymore, that'll directly dump into the, the ditch.
Since the old thing was there.
Yeah, you've already got a, a nice channel to put by, but the only thing that I would be concerned about is do you put an elbow in there without a structure to change direction? And it's a thirty six inch pipe, it's a pretty large pipe.
Sure, too.
Right, so you put a bend in it without actually putting.
An elbow in it, a little bit of relief valve on top of that.
Well, something, you know, something just to kind of do it, it's, but you know, but we're not talking a lot of, a lot of length and thirty six inches is a pretty decent diameter, not that you'd want anybody to crawl in there, but chances of it plugging are pretty minimal and that's that diameter too that you would have.
You get a bigger rain, it blows it right out anyway, so pretty decent rate.
So I would say, it's something for discussion, but I think for now that quote
Yeah.
is putting it back to the original condition.
Okay.
And
you wouldn't take, you wouldn't take big dollars to switch it to the other way.
No, it wouldn't, so, I mean, just a conversation and then depending on whether or not we wanted to put an additional type structure to, to bend the water versus an elbow, you know.
And maybe chat with Mike when he's out there working on it, see what his thoughts are too, I mean.
It's usable, I guess.
If he's there. So make it work the best we can, well, it's part, but back together.
The easiest thing is put it back the way it was, but if we do that then the thing I'd want to change is the way that an outlet's into the, into that ditch.
It's waiting.
You're fighting a current, you got a pipe that's actually inviting the water back into the system and not, and you got a pipe downstream, you want it almost pull or create a vacuum. But this one's doing the opposite.
Yeah. So maybe that should cause this, no, I mean, that's the only thing that's changed the last fifty years, you know.
Right, but we've had a lot of heavy rainfalls too, nothing that.
Everyone last fall and it held, I mean, we had ground cover, of course, now we have freshly worked dirt and dry, dry weather and.
It's something that we should look at, but I think for the most part.
So we want to get ahold of Mike and you find out what he thinks and then do a new proposal?
Uh. We can, I don't know, I mean.
Let's go with this one so we can get a start.
Go with this one, then we can.
Get a surprise on that change, basically.
Yeah.
Once he's out there and takes a look at it, at least getting going on the books here, so.
Hopefully we're running out of time for us to think about this for now and get it, because he's gonna want to farm, so.
Well, right now, he can.
Yeah, that's what I said.
It needs to. And we don't want it to sit there and get worse either.
Yeah. Mike's ready to rock on this.
I think so, probably.
Probably calling today, it could be in there, weather permitting.
Yeah. He's got a lot of material to haul.
He's got a lot to do.
Everything that haul the way needs to come back.
Right, from the grid project, yeah.
Okay, well. So new motion to accept the bid here then.
A motion to accept Mike Pearson's best prepared DVD thirty four.
I'll second it, soon for the discussion.
Aaron and all, please say hi.
Hi.
Hold the same sign, motion will carry. Alright, thank you. For the, how are we coming on cleaning out corn stalks and everywhere else in town?
We're doing what we can.
Yeah.
And still we want to haul a lot of this stuff.
Where, where are you gonna do, haul up near?
Well, we've hauled some already to the boneyard.
Okay.
Um, but I guess and I'll ask you guys this. Diesel prices are high. These corn stalks are not the county's corn stalks, but we still need to kind of maintain drainage, so do you want us, I guess, the thing is, is isn't everybody's, I don't know, I get torn up between is it everybody's responsibility or not, you know? The money's coming out of my budget.
Right.
To, to haul this stuff and yeah, we did probably not have to paw as much snow, but is that a, is that a, okay, since we didn't pause snow, we should be able to haul everybody's corn stalks, you know? We've been out trying to clean, clean up what we can and I know we've gotten rid of some of the corn stalks and but it would be nice and we, we've had an offer for somebody to, to, you know, stockpile them here instead, which is great, but man, we're talking I don't know how many truckloads we have to haul.
Tons, I mean, there's just, places I've seen is fifteen, twenty trucks or more at a time, you're gonna have to clean out, well, that's a lot of, it's a lot of tons, I mean.
It is, and right now, I don't know if many landowners are gonna want us to throw them back in the field.
Not right now, that's a problem right now, personally, I would want them back in my field, but not all right by the edge of the ditch, because, I mean, I just like to put them back where they came from.
So the other option is to I don't know, just to pile them on the fence line and in the fall, the landowners can incorporate them back in if they want, but you know, we got it, probably you do that if you put them on the fence line where they wash the first time, they can wash again, they're gonna float, I mean.
Well, I mean.
Right, yeah, so.
Talking.
I suppose the, the easiest thing to do is just to pick up a home, but man, we're gonna spend a lot of money and we're not we're not gonna get any female reimbursement for that.
Well, the deal thing would be to get one of them big pure spreaders in there and load the spreaders and take it right out in the field if the conditions were proper and re-spread them because they're full of dirt and nutrients and everything else that you.
I think some guys have, I think there was.
Could be.
Was there one, uh, what was that one where the landowner, it was a drainage dish that got cleaned out and landowner adjacent to it took a spreader loaded, loaded them up, but.
Okay.
There might be.
Doesn't belong to the landlord.
They might want some reimbursement for taking care of the drainage districts.
Stuff.
Stuff, because it wasn't his stuff, but he not just eliminating.
Yeah.
We're still cleaning out.
And they will compost on time.
They will, and I thought about, you know, can you burn them, let them dry and burn, but we're never gonna burn them all, I know, I, I, I put it out on the Service Bureau website. There are several different ways counties have handled it. And there are several different ways I'd rather not handle it.
Right.
Because you can really upset a lot of people, but because we know where they came from, they're not our responsibility, technically the code of Iowa says, you know where the, you know where the the siltation came from, that landlord's responsible for them, but there are locations where there's bean ground adjacent to the ditch and you know they're not theirs. So how do you know whose they are? And it's a flood event, I guess, they come from a long ways, so. I guess, you know, if we want to solve the problem, we just go and haul everything away. And we're gonna spend a lot of money doing it.
But it comes back to all taxpayers, definitely, I mean, you know, not just the individuals, but.
You're right.
Yeah, I mean, not saying that's probably, you know, I mean, it's.
We want to establish our drainage again.
Yeah, well, we have to, I mean, we have another rain event here in the next third.
Well, and I know that some, some of them have said, you know, if you get them opened up, maybe a smaller rain event will get them to float enough to go through the culvert, a lot of times they float and they're above the culvert and as the water comes down, that's when they all settle in front of it.
All we're doing is pushing it downstream, just like everything else now.
It's New Orleans.
Eventually it'll get there, keep moving around.
Throw all the corn down there after a while, but.
Yeah.
Um, if you guys.
Most of people apparently want them all the way.
Well.
Is that what you're telling me?
I'm not getting a lot of information from anybody, it sounded to me like most of them they just don't want them right now because right, when, when weather gets fine, they're gonna want to plant, they're not gonna want to start.
There, there's no way, if you do like the regular ditch cleaning, we put them over, even if you spread them out over twenty feet, that they're gonna be able to grow anything there this year.
No.
I mean, there's just no way, there's not enough, you can't, you can't get it worked in. Cause it, it's basically the hard stack and it's not gonna.
So the other option is, you know, we've hauled several loads up to the boneyard, we're just gonna stockpile and let them rot. You know, maybe eventually we'll have some good tops, I don't know, but.
It'll break down.
It'll break down, takes a long time.
The worst part is the, every guy's doing something more.
The worst part is the, every guy's doing something more productive, yeah, cause it takes a long time.
You can't imagine how many truckloads it's gonna take in some of these locations.
I'm just, yeah, just fill this one up seventy-five cents in the last couple days, so. You didn't know.
I didn't.
Legitally, all you really have to do is clean your dish, but in the field.
That's typically what we should do, but you know, we've got, like I said, we had one location where it was bean ground.
So you know.
You know it wasn't from there.
Well, you do have some old stocks or depending on how you did your. No, I know, but.
You could see where it. But a lot of it's bean ground, black dirt was in the ditch, cause there was no cover.
I don't have an answer, I guess, teaching them, you know, landowners need to be responsive to that and decide what to.
I think what we'll do then is we'll just. Each location, talk to landowner if they want them, otherwise we're just gonna have to haul them. And I hate to spend that kind of money, it's gonna be expensive. But. I'll give them direction that way, that might be the best thing we have to do, and some counties will do, some counties are doing it, some counties are. Stockpile them, they'll turn them into topsoil and then they'll sell the topsoil after time, you know, they'll mulch around and make some money off of it, that's probably what we can do is. Don't mix it with everything else and.
Sticky ball.
Big sticky fire on corn stalks.
Lot of nutrients in there, I guarantee you that. Anyway, yeah, well, you have to do what you.
That's what we're gonna, I guess, then the decision's kind of made, we're just gonna do that, then we're gonna. Spread them where we want them or throw them where we want them and haul the rest, I guess. But at least we're all on the same page here now, we know doing.
Yeah.
Teachers.
Yeah, I was trying to get to it, man.
She said, does it with soil and water, maybe?
Yeah, maybe visit with them, I mean, I don't know what their suggestions are gonna be.
You wanna get them involved. That was the one thing that was kind of ruined, throwing the red flag. Cause I've heard counties have gone to soil and water conservation and said, this is a problem and the landlord gets a nice, not so nice letter. Doesn't make friends with anybody, not that it's, you know.
What'd they send them a letter for?
There's a code, there's a section in the code about, um, I can't remember what the the verdict was now. But it had to do with not controlling your erosion on your property.
Well, they were in the proper place until it rained six inches.
Yeah, and that's the thing too, you know, mother nature doesn't play well with everybody.
No, I know.
So. You know, everybody had a fence still, and that's, we talked about that, I mentioned that too, where we put off. At a lot of these locations, do you put? Half crossing one oh five is one that. That thing stopped with four feet of stalks stuck up on the fence, but it kept the culvert open. But then you still gotta clean that fence out.
Right, yeah, I mean, it, it would have stopped some further upstream, but.
Fence lines would hold a lot of back on the field and the ditches are privacy.
Little cleaner, yeah, especially if you had a fence line at the ditch.
Yeah.
That's where a lot of, a lot of the road, road ones are gone, you know, perimeter fences are gone. As I talk with the landowners.
Well, we'll just do our standard, talk to landlords, they can take them, we'll take them, otherwise we'll just haul and. Do we can, I guess, try to find a short haul.
Yeah, so, I had a guy, he wanted something else done that was unrelated to corn stalks and I just told him flat out, I said, you know, we could hook, but it's gonna take a while, so.
Yeah, there's guys are. And this is a special circumstance, we're not gonna haul. You know, we do ditch cleans, we're not gonna haul, we try to avoid hauling dirt for people.
Right.
This is a different circumstance in that it's kind of more of a flooding event than it is the natural. Ditch clean stuff, so we just wanna make that clear now. This might be hauling stalks, but we're not gonna continue to haul a lot of tops, well, there's times that we haul dirt before, but. We've tried to minimize that as much as we can.
Yeah, okay, appreciate it.
So you guys are aware of it? Do it that way.
Sound good, alright, we, Ruth is supposed to be on at nine. Ruth, are you there?
Yes, I just turned her out how to unmute.
Alright, no problem. What do you got for us?
Well, as we talked about at the WHW County Board meeting, back on April fourth. Couple things had to come through the individual board meetings for approval.
Okay.
Um, and the two that I bring you today is that there are no changes to the WHW County Social Service Relief Guide. But we wanted to have them approved by each county's board so that they date stamped as the official version. Um, and the second thing was the, the, the three changes we make to the Worth County P E program. Um, that we were going to make the, the change. To forty-eight dollars a month from forty-five dollars a month based on the social security new guidelines, make that effective. January first retroactively, um, that we were gonna increase the, the guidelines of. From a hundred percent to a hundred and fifteen percent of the poverty level for resources that people could have. And then our income now, and then, um, we were also gonna not hold against people. If they received SSDI or a disability check or an SSI, just a, a income check from social security. Basically, if you had a work history, you had a check and therefore you were bumped out of this program, but also had to participate. Have a participation fee for the assistance that you were receiving, and so we basically talked about taking that. Participation fee out of the income and then using that new income less the service fee that they're paying. A basis for the, the P E, um, participation. So we're just looking, we've basically approved it there, we're just looking for you guys to approve it again here as a Worth County.
So, yeah, but, uh, we can do that on one motion, can't we?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the Worth County P E program and the County Social Services Relief Guidelines.
Twenty twenty-two.
Yep.
Motion is made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we're moving to second, any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion will carry, okay, uh, anything else, Ruth?
Um, the, the only other thing is that, um, I, I talked with Hancocky Board last week. Um, as, as WHW is kind of dissolving standpoint, um, wanted to make sure that. Because I, I know Lauren, I have a supervisor to advocate for me, make sure that the. Uh, mental health advocate position is still gonna be done for the three counties. Um, and that my pay, my benefits wouldn't be affected by that, that following, so they basically, at their meeting. Yeah, the, the financial part of it would stay in place, I just wanted to bring that up to your attention, if you guys need to do anything to make it as well.
Uh, I guess we'll have to discuss that, I guess.
Yeah.
See.
Okay.
Right? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Bye bye.
We'll go back to claims. Take a look at the claims.
Yeah. I'll second it.
Second it, move forward discussion. Here none, all's fixed, aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion will carry. Reports. Those are payrolls, okay. For the discussion.
Just payroll.
Payroll change.
That Dan's got somebody new coming.
Oh, okay. So I'll take a motion to approve the payroll eligibility certifications for the. Is that how you say it? Wayne, Jason Wayne. Moving second, was there any further discussion? Alright. Okay.
I gotta get a new one. Not free.
All kinds of fancy stuff in there. That's what I was, I was trying to find the page, alright, so the fee schedule. Just got an hour, hour relate for partners, one sixty managers, one twenty-five staffs, one oh five, so the total cost is for twenty-two's. Thirty-four thousand, twenty-three is thirty-five, three fifty, twenty-four, thirty-six, seven fifty, twenty-five, thirty-eight, twenty, twenty-five. And twenty-six is thirty-nine, seven fifty.
There's also fees for. They take care of fixed assets for us and they do. And then they're gonna end up doing a single audit when we get the government money. And I think that's still in the ballpark.
Okay.
And I, there, I appreciate working with them, I hope that guys will let us keep working.
Yes. No. Right, so.
Do you wanna see it again?
No. A motion to accept the, uh, audit firm selection of.
Gardener and company.
Gardener and company.
A motion to approve the gardener company for.
I'll second that motion, is there any further discussion?
Just a little root.
Yeah. Already.
Alright, Melissa.
Morning. I don't have anything unless you guys have questions for me.
Just, uh, next Tuesday, we still on for that kickoff?
Yes.
Okay, I'll try to make sure, I'll try to be there.
Okay.
And that's at.
The W CTA office, thank you.
Yep.
Right, okay, alright, okay, we'll talk to you later then.
Alright, have a good day.
Right, uh, Chris is not on today, right? Department head discussion. Anything there?
So I do have one thing to bring the board.
Yep.
Uh, I have a job opportunity.
Who?
On the table.
Okay.
Uh, this has been for the last two, three years, uh, federal government SISA. Has been looking for a cybersecurity advisor from the state of Iowa. Uh, and we've been discussing, I've been discussing, I've been, you know, nothing has happened, nothing's happened, and then in February this year. They said I wouldn't have to move, the prior position was. Okay, uh, so I am actually going through the security process right now. And I'm waiting for my final offer, I haven't accepted anything yet, I've got the initial offer, but I'm waiting for the final offer. I don't know if I'm gonna take it, I mean, I like what I'm doing, I like the people I work with, guys, uh, but it is a pretty, pretty great opportunity. Uh, so this would be going around the state, talking to all sorts of different people about cybersecurity education and outreach, those kind of things. Is there something Dan can do with his background check? That has been threatened already, yeah.
I've said that, oh, there's one with your name on it too, you can do what you want with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I appreciate all the support.
But your ICIT is gonna help us.
If we, I mean, yeah, I. Always good, somebody wants better than self, hopefully, it's hopefully, it's significantly much better, I guess, you know, nothing we can do. I, I don't think pretty much we can. You know, it's an opportunity, and and I fully respect that, like I said, only, if we get to that point and you make that decision, you know, hopefully. We can find somebody, you know, help us find somebody that's closer as good as you've been.
I, and I appreciate it, guys, um, you know, my intention is to at least give you guys a month from when I accept the offer.
Awesome.
Uh, and then also to, you know, assist you folks as much as you want me to in, in onboarding anybody that you hire. Uh, ICIT will be available as well. I will store.
You've gone all over the state hiring people, so I would hope they could come back and help us.
Absolutely. I, I know there are, you know, there, there has been some discussions in other counties, county IT staff that, you know, would possibly step up to this position.
Okay.
Just because of the technology maturity we have up here, it looks pretty attractive for, for some of those folks. But, like I said, I haven't, you know, this is not a job I wanted to wa- walk away from, it was my retirement job, but like I said, it's, uh. Depending upon what the offer comes in at, I get, I got some, you know, it's not a tough, it's not easy to do, so.
You are getting up there, you need to get better I P ers and.
The, the pay is significant, uh, you know, and I've been doing the twenty-four seven thing here by myself for seventeen years. Yep, so, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's attractive to me and, and my spouse that, you know, when I find my vacation, I don't have people calling. Okay, or two o'clock in the morning for calls for those kinds of things, so. I've never called yet, I'm like, I gotta pay the pipe.
Yeah.
Some of your people.
Russell helped call her once, after hours.
So, and I think, I don't know if we've really ever touched on this or not, going forward, you know, I mean. Hiring backup is always hard for any county, I think, especially county our size, you know, is there a possibility? I'm not sure what other country, Winnebago only has one, Mitchell only has one, I mean, and I know you guys share and help each other out. But, you know, it's like a four or five counties go together and hire a backup person, I mean, is that a possibility?
Well, so Winnebago and I talked about that, hiring somebody between the two of us as a, as a help desk person that we would share, um, and then. They kind of got shot down on their end.
Yeah. And then. Budget, I mean, that's just.
Yeah.
And the same systems would help too.
Well, and that's nice, because I mean, Winnebago County, I mean, they, they hired, you know, Eric left and they've got Boy now, Boy, you know, he's fantastic. Really sharp kid, um, and, you know, we've, we've talked about doing some sharing as well, so there's, there's always possibilities, I think. There, there's quite a few ICIT members that are very familiar with our, our operation here, and the only thing is. In, in the ICIT capacity, they can't really fix anything, they can, you know, tell you what's wrong, they can tell you how to do it, but they can't really touch anything.
Right.
You know, you'd have to have that agreement where it was informal between Eric and I, where if I was gone and something needed to happen and vice versa. We would travel the county, have the permission to go and fix. We would travel the county, have the permission to go in and, and fix them that needed.
Okay.
So, you know, I, like I said, if, if I do happen to, to take the position, um, I'll still be in Northwood, uh, I will still help you folks out and. And, and make sure, you know, how long you guys hide right here, so. As much as possible.
Well, if he leaves, it's reboot, restart.
Run over and restart our computers?
No, actually, you know what? Uh, Eric had the ability, you know, I had the confidence in Eric that, you know, he, he knew Tyler, you know, he'd make a phone call to Tyler folks. Uh, he has the NetApp storage and all the other stuff, and, you know, tech, technology is kind of technology, no matter how you slice it. Uh, in some respects, so, and, and usually I know that the two times that Eric actually was over here, I was able to work with him on the phone. Cause it, it was a physical switch change that happened. So I, the word has gotten out, I know some people know, but I wanted to officially talk to you guys at the meeting to just to let you know what's happening. Cause I do answer to you guys.
Yep. Also, keep us informed, we'd really appreciate it, and we wish you luck in the direction you go.
Hope that background check comes back all right.
Yeah.
Well, can't guarantee it, right?
You gotta get around them.
I, I kept looking, oh yeah, what happened, what?
Yeah, what? They're just going through your Facebook stuff. Nothing you got, right? Was that a password in your Facebook?
Yeah, I, I, I have passed my initial security, um, and they did say I could start the position. And I said, well, what happens if I fail the rest of the security, and they said, well, we'll take the position away, I'm like.
No, let's just.
Go ahead, no. So, yeah, so that's, that's where I'm sitting right now, but hopefully, I, and I have no idea when the, the rest of the security. They, they, they said anywhere from six months to a year for the initial, and that took less than, that took about a month, so. Wow, they're excited.
Fun. Okay, all right, well, appreciate that.
Keep us updated.
People do. Does anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I've got, uh, I'm getting some, uh, prices on getting the s- uh, safety manuals printed. Um, the vendors I reached out to are supposed to have those back to me yet this week, and I can have. Those available for next week's meeting, if, Jack, if you would put that on the agenda for next week. Well, hopefully have those compiled into you for next week. And Joel, I think probably you're gonna have a problem, they're gonna try and figure out how they can afford your per diem. It's gonna be the biggest.
Good thing you got so many friends in your.
Yeah, yeah, I, I appreciate your thoughts and prayers, Mark, thank you so much.
Good luck, comrade.
I, you would think, if I go to a town, I'll get a boost.
All right, is there anything else? Get supervised weekly, I guess, right?
I had partners for children, cause we had to figure out what we were gonna do with the rest of our library money, and Mason City and Forest City did come in with. Some bids, so we took care of that, and that's all I had last week.
Um, I had Care Connections Tuesday. Oh, we, um. Have a fund balance, we've got to spend down for a state size that does not start paying us, so we got an opportunity to. Uh, get one of the last services that they're requiring us to have. Working with, uh, Seasons over in Spencer. On upgrades in their building, and then they're also gonna use two other regions are going to help fund that as well. Um, so we can get, I can't remember which service it is, I'm terrible with that, but it, uh, anyways, it may save, or it will save some trips to Sioux City. Um, that we're currently going to now to get some services, um, that'll come back to Spencer, so we'll be right at that hundred and twenty miles, but.
Shave off anymore.
We'll have, we'll have, yeah, got some time, and we're following, following within the state guidelines basically, so. We put a pretty good contribution into that. Um, just for the fact that if we don't start spending our. Money down, they're not gonna, they're gonna cut payments from us, or not send us quarterly payments, so they give us no choice, but it, it's ridiculous, but two million dollars.
Yeah. User removed.
Yeah, otherwise we don't get quarterly payments, and that's, that's for this year, next fiscal year is gonna be about another one point two or three that we have to spend out. And then they're gonna leave us when it's all sent down, leave us about two hundred and forty thousand, they'll operate us. That's if, that's if it moves to ten percent, so it's.
Is that including everybody's fund balance at, at the county level that we gotta get rid of?
We gotta clear out that fund too.
Cause we don't have much.
Right.
It, it kind of concerned me that the other ones had a hundred and some thousand and I had nine and ten.
Yeah, yeah, whatever's left, that has to get cleared out and zeroed by end of the fiscal year, I believe, right? So it has, has, uh. Oh, shoot. Butterproof.
Carmen.
Carmen, yeah. She's been contacted, yeah, I'm not like that. Anyway, yeah, so we're getting our services up to snuff and, and getting some stuff a little closer to us, so when it comes time to transport. Should be saving some time and money there, so. Um, that's all I had last week.
Workforce development, uh, just kind of a regular meeting, but we also had to reapprove our local board plan because the government rejected it the first time around or whatever, so we had to go in. Get that redone, do some couple different things in there to get it correct, and it'll pass now, so that's good, so we're all up to. Okay, and then we had Board of Health, or I had Board of Health on Wednesday. Eric knows we're looking for another nurse and getting no applications, and so we. Just at the pay scale a little bit, to see if we can get some hits on, I don't know if it's gonna help or not, but. Competition with, you know, Mercy One and Mayo is just.
Well, there's, we're giving the traveling nurses.
Traveling nurses are killing us.
Seven bucks an hour.
And I don't blame them one bit.
Traveling.
And they're only, the only difference is they get five days a week here, worse, you know, but.
Yeah.
It's three times a month.
Three times a month.
Yeah, right, so, um, we're, we're gonna make that attempt here, see what happens, otherwise they're doing fine, they're managing with what they have, but, uh. So, yeah. Not a choice you like to make, but the other counties are also looking at doing that, adjusting, unfortunately, we've got some nurses that have been staying and. But, you know, they're all gonna be looking at it, uh, when they leave, so. Not much fun, but anyway, and then also, uh, we've been having some chats back and forth as well on emails, and you want a call session? Um, he is Thursday and Friday, he is open, that's what he's got. So, um. I don't know what works for you guys, uh, Thursday morning, he's got Thursday. Morning eight forty-five to twelve thirty is available, and two fifteen to four is available in the afternoon, and then Friday eight forty-five to eleven fifteen, two to the end of the day, so.
I'm a little wolf in the afternoon.
Just did Thursday afternoon.
All right. So. Two fifteen he's got us when he'd be available, so.
You know, you know, and I saw that, you know, you're emailing back.
Yeah, it just came, so.
And then does he have an agenda, or does he want me to post?
Um, he'll have to write one up, I guess, what, what he wants to discuss, so.
Yeah, we'll set up the Zoom so that you get the recording at least. But, yeah.
Did you want to set up Zoom then, or you want me to say that? Thursday, right, you guys said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Thursday two fifteen?
Yep.
Yeah.
Should just down your work finishing.
Yeah.
Tell them to send you an agenda.
Or let me know what to put in it, or, or what to post, or whatever. Got a little time.
Should be just discussion, navigation.
Cover everything. Yeah. Not more of us. You're my tea guy. All right.
You're already in.
You couldn't pay me enough for that. Is there anything else that needs to come with the board? Anything we need to add to this?
Motion to.
I'll second it.
Moving second, all's fair, say hi.
Bye.
Thank you, guys.